Good evening and welcome to, it's Wednesday, April 10th. 6:30, welcome to a meeting of the JV Library Board of Trustees, meeting jointly with the Permanent Town Building Committee. Please be advised, this meeting is being recorded. Anything discussed or entered into the chat will become part of the public record. Buffy, can I get you to do a roll call?
Yep, here's the roll call, Claremont.
Here.
Derek's here. Lechner is absent tonight, Ellen, or maybe coming?
So far, I don't see your texting in.
Yeah, okay. Roach?
Here.
Secor?
Here.
Teal?
Here.
Nancy Cook?
Here.
Isleton?
Here.
Herpinski?
Here.
Tom Mahana is absent. Roberts?
Here.
Zagowitz? Not here yet. Berlinsky? No. Beth?
Here.
Leadburg?
Here.
Rainville?
Here.
Goodwin?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Lunks?
Here.
Now I'll go through the FAA to see who's here. Anselon?
They are not present. FAA is not present.
Okay, alright. Um. Ken Beck, I think that's the only additional.
The engineer, not present.
Yep.
I'm here.
Oh, are you? Yeah, look at you.
Okay.
If you don't need me, I'm fine with that, but.
I, I, I think the answer is pretty clear tonight about what we're doing, so I don't think we're, you are needed. If, if we find ourselves in a dire thing, I will email you, but I don't think we will be.
You call me on my cell too, if you need to.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Buffy, we also have Carol Morse as a attendee, as a guest, Carol Morse.
Carol Morse, okay. And Kristen Last is here, right?
Here, yes.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's it, Lynn, go ahead.
Okay, first item is approval of the minutes from the meeting of April 1st. It was a joint meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Was that you, Chris?
That was Scott.
Scott, sorry, thank you.
Any additions or questions, changes? Okay, we have the vote?
Claremont?
Aye.
Derek's aye. Flechner not here. Roach?
Aye.
Secor?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Isleton?
Aye.
Herpinski?
Aye.
Mahana not here. Roberts?
Here, yes, aye.
You're voting in favor. And Zagowitz is not here.
He can go present, that's true.
Sorry, my apologies, I didn't have you checked out. Alright, so it passes, uh, 10, 02. Uh, 10, 10, 0, 0, sorry.
Hey. Okay, there's no warrants tonight or invoices, so we'll move on to old business. First item is to vote on the mechanical systems.
Am I allowed to make a motion, even though I don't vote?
No. Alright.
Can I suggest someone make a motion?
Yes. Would someone like to make, to make a motion to approve the mechanical system?
Well, we're approving, uh, actually, I would appreciate, I guess you have, Alicia, what, what would be the correct terminology to?
BRF system.
Okay, so. I guess make a motion to approve the, uh, BRF system for the cyber mechanical and in lieu of geothermal, I guess, to be precise.
That's perfect. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Alright, here's our voting. Claremont?
Aye.
Derek's aye. Flechner not here. Roach?
Aye.
Secor?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Isleton?
Aye.
Herpinski?
Aye.
Mahana is not here. Roberts?
Aye.
Zagowitz? Now, wasn't Jim Zagowitz here?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he voted on the last one. So the last one was 9, 0, 0, and this one also is 9, 0, 0.
Did we need any discussion on that? I don't think we kind of had it last night, is my opinion, but. Yeah. Well, you're right, for, for those who are there, yep. Okay, I was just checking.
Yep. Okay. Then I'm gonna move on to the next item, which is a vote to proceed, is to give permission and to proceed with the design development phase. Can I have a motion?
I move that we move into the DD phase. Approve the project as noted in previous meetings to move into the DD phase with those modifications.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay. That's our business. The next, the only other thing.
We have to vote.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
Okay, here's the vote. I'm still writing, sorry. Claremont?
Aye.
Derek's aye. Lechner not here. Roach?
Aye.
Secor?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Isleton?
Aye.
Herpinski?
Aye.
Mahana not here. Roberts?
Aye.
Zagowitz not here. 9, 0, 0.
All set?
Yes.
Yep. The only thing left on the agenda is to set the next meeting date. Unless someone has anything else.
Sure, I, I would just say, you know, thanks to, um, the team for being there last night, and that we had a lot, a lot of questions, I know we kept, um, a lot of people, you know, up, including our, our Austria's, uh, OPM, I'm sorry, but, um, I'm glad, it was worth it, I think we had a, you know, pretty convincing argument, not what people wanted to hear, but, you know, it is what it is, so, uh, thanks for the effort.
So Lynn, if I can just chime in about, um, April 17th. According to the town website, it typically would be a meeting of the Historical Commission, but Fine Gold Alexander is working on some design options to incorporate the concerns of the Historical Commission. And unless that date, which is April Vacation Week, which may impact some, or may be, you know, completely a moot point, we were hoping that we could have the meeting on the 17th, the working group and or the entire joint committee, if we wanted to have a first look at what we would be taking to the Historical Commission, and then reach out to them to see if they would have a special virtual meeting with us.
Anyone have any opinions on that?
Hey Lynn, I think Beth has her hand up.
Oh, sorry, I don't.
Yeah, mine was on a different subject. I was going to ask that, at all these joint meetings, if we could do a review of the timeline, I know there was a question from the audience last night, I think it came in at the end regarding the timeline. And, um, I think that this would be the right meeting to do a timeline review, if we could do that at every meeting, I don't know if we're prepared to do it tonight, but because, you know, time is money and time is a critical part of the project. I know when questions come in from the public, I'm not sure, I know last night we said that we were gonna go out to bid in December. Um, I don't know when we aim to begin construction and when those later phases are scheduled for, but if we could do that type of a review at all of our meetings.
I think that's a good idea. Are we prepared to do it tonight? This is a good point to do that.
Yeah, we, we did send the schedule out, and, uh, yes, Beth, I think the most up-to-date budget in the schedule has to be part of every packet going forward here, we're moving into a completely different phase that will go at a much swifter clip. So I can share it, or Christina, if, if you can share it, either one of us can. Let's see, I think I have.
Does, I'm screen sharing it, but you're not seeing it?
We are, you are, okay. Alicia, do you want to explain how this works?
Sure, this is a fluid document, which we're trying to just start to set up the structure, all the pieces aren't in there because we didn't know like when we were going to proceed, but we have some placeholders in there, and it obviously needs additional information. But the idea is that, um, design development will start and will last eighty weeks, which I forget that, what that translates to, but, um, those are in, um, five-day weeks, so it's, uh, the, for the DD duration, and the idea is that we just put on here the meetings that the joint committee would meet on the more or less the first Monday of the month, and the working group, I think I had on there every third week, I believe, on here for DD, and we also have listed on there that we know we need to have a check out mid DD, we know we need to have a check in with Mass Save, with the MBLC, and the historic meeting is on here too late, we know that, we're trying to do that. Um, probably not next Wednesday, but like Ellen mentioned, we're gonna try to set up a special meeting with them, but within the next two, three weeks, I'm really hoping that we're gonna be able to meet with them at least for the first time, and maybe perhaps again. But like I said, that was a placeholder in there, we knew we needed to meet with them. Then if you scroll down there, I have in there, there's a DD review period, which was similar to after SD, which is we need to issue the drawings to everybody. You know, to the, to the town, the working group, joint committee, cost estimators, MBLC and Mass Save, everybody to review, and there's sort of that three-week review period, everybody looks at the drawings. We have to do the, um, we have meetings with, following up on those, that review period. We have to reconcile the estimate, present the estimate to the working group and the joint committee to make sure everything is, the projects in line with what we anticipate the cost to be, and that should happen at the end of August, I would ideally like that to stay at the end of August, because I know the beginning of September can get busy. And so, um, I don't want it to have to push out too late, because then I go on the vacation the end of September, so that's not gonna work for me, so it's all about me, don't you know? But anyway, I know that they're trying to make it fit in before it gets too busy at the, the beginning of September, and then I might not be available. And then jump into construction documents, um, and really trying to push to have that all done, to go to bid, right now it's showing, December 23rd, not my favorite, if you keep scrolling down. Um, but again, it's the same thing, CD drawings, it shows all the meetings, we know we have to check in again with Mass Save, MBLC, uh, different groups on here. And, uh, try and have, do a midpoint estimate to check in, make sure everything, the prices again are in line. Hoping to go to, bid at the, just before the holidays, and because we're putting it just out before Christmas, basically we have to add an extra week, but that takes we usually allow eight weeks, that's about right for bidding. And then I don't have construction on there, but the, um, why do it, I have it starting shortly after bid, so if bids are due late February, then construction would start by mid, mid-March, because you have to allow a little time for contracting.
Yeah, and I think the question that came in last night that we were unable to get answered related to the amount of time in between getting the RFP out and, um, when we would be making a selection, I guess the concern is looking at, uh, Ameris, you know, which is going through a similar project right now, I guess it's been five or six months. That process of, um, in between getting the bids in and getting questions answered and actually selecting.
Bid, the bid process takes about two months. That's what we go out on there for bidding.
Ameris has been significantly longer, but.
Well, we're, we're hoping that's eight weeks, ten weeks max, as long as there are any bid protests or issues, but eight weeks is about what we would show. Chris, do you have a question? Obviously, there needs to be more information on here, and I will continue to, you know, add to this and populate it as information comes up. Chris?
I'm just, as you were talking about the Historic Commission and wanting to get their input into the design process very early, the Westford Fire Department was brought up a few months ago about, um, access to the site for their ladder truck and their requirements for the site. So, um, since that's a huge thing, I would recommend putting in a, an explicit line item in your schedule. Synchronize for them.
So we did have a quick inter-departmental review sometime during SD, it was, it was quick, and we did touch with the fire department at the time, and they did give us templates for their fire trucks, so to make sure that they were able to turn. And the 23rd, we have a online meeting with Henry, the building commissioner, to ask him, how does he want to see this happen? How, when does he want to meet with people, and we'll start to, you know, I know he, uh, my understanding is he likes to do it as a roundtable, so lots of people are there, and if, you know, if fire department isn't there, we will certainly make an appointment with them, but I'm not sure if they're part of their group, or how Henry would like to see that happen, because I want to do it his way.
Sure thing, and probably also, um, having, uh, the Westford Police Department involved as well, just so they can now think about security perspective.
Nope, they're another group to check in with, absolutely. Sue?
Guys, I've, I've got, I've got to run, so I guess I'll go over with, so, thanks, I'll talk to you next time.
First, congratulations on moving to this next stage, and then second, it, it, I think it would be helpful to check in about trash and recycling, and perhaps ultimately compost removal, sometimes that gets overlooked in the design of the access. Thanks.
Yep, well, I, I, yes, we'll, we'll review that, and it's a good thing to check in on and anticipate. Anyone else?
Maybe we could add to this, Alicia, when, when groundbreaking would occur, I think on my, um, draft timeline, I have it a little too early, so I, we do that when we award the contract to the contractor, or when we have our hard hats and shovels, and will the ground still be frozen?
Well, whenever we, if we end up starting, the contract would be awarded, you know, if we, the bid, the bid comes in, XYZ company gets it, yay, thank you. We allow a week, two weeks for the contract to be settled, and these guys don't have a bench full of guys just ready to jump onto work the next day, they have their own contracts to line up, so it takes that three, the fastest four weeks for these guys to get folks going, because there's going to be an abatement phase first, they may very well get the abatement guy going really quickly, and then set up the rest of their contracts and things like that, because when abatement is, which is, no one else can be in the building, right? That's a one contractor activity. So I, I'm not sure quite how they will do it, but, um, when we say yay, thank you, you're XYZ, you're gonna be it, you have a, we'll give a, um, notice of award, and then a notice to proceed, and the notice to proceed will say you have X number of days, 500 days, whatever, I'm 500, whatever it is, I can't think off the top of my head what it is, you have from today. And I will, the date will be specifically dated that I've issued it, which is the date the contract is signed. 500 days later, I go into date calculator, give them the date when that it's due. That, I'm making it 500 days, will be in the contract, no surprises, they know that when they bid it, what the expectation is. So I will know, once we have the, once we, um, know what the duration, when we, when they start, when their contract is signed, when the actual start date is, when the finished date is. And then after just.
Not ribbon cutting, but groundbreaking, do we?
Oh, groundbreaking. Ground, uh, groundbreaking can be any, anything like, um, groundbreaking deal, top of steel, and ribbon cutting to open it. Don't literally have to be the day that they show up, don't literally have to be the time, we can, there's a little wiggle in there. So groundbreaking, we can have the contractor deliver a pile of dirt and do the photo op on a warmer day, any number of things, so we can.
That event can be photoshopped.
It can be, but I mean, just because we're saying construction starts in February, that will be chilly, but we can have an event on a day when it's, you know, we can figure it out, it doesn't have to literally be it can, you know, when the contractors are starting, we can figure out something when it's a, a little bit warmer, on a sunny day, any number of things. I, I admire your excitement, but we're not quite there yet.
So, um, please tell us about the commissioning agent, is that on the horizon soon?
Yes, during, we had to know what the mechanical system was going to be to be able to put out an RFP for the commissioning agent. Now that we know what the system is gonna be, we will, I will, um, prepare for our next meeting, I'll prepare a, um, request for a proposal that outlines what their scope is. You all can review it, we'll broadcast it out to a bunch of different, uh, firms to solicit their, what their prices would be in their proposals, and we'll get proposals back and review and to award that to somebody in the next few weeks, so they can start to engage on the project.
So maybe for the purpose of this next meeting on, on April 17th, could, could I just ask, not to take over your role here, Lynn, but does everyone want, um, to meet and review these designs, then I'll post, you know, a joint meeting and a library working group like tonight, so that everyone can see the, um, the preliminary, uh, designs that Fine Gold Alexander is looking at to incorporate some of the historic and preservation features that they were, um, really desirous of seeing in the building.
This is, instead of just having the working group get together?
Yes, yes, I'm thinking that. Um, I mean, I don't know if, if school vacation week is an issue for people, and I don't know if everyone wants to, to see that.
Well, are you talking about a presentation, or are you gonna have them send out the drawings?
I'm, I was just gonna have them zoom in and share their options, or their favorite option with us.
No, not favorite, we want to see options.
Okay.
We are a discerning group of people, and we.
Well, each option would obviously have pros and cons, and it will probably be not A, B, or C, but A' or, you know, uh, probably a little blend of each one, but, yep. Pick, pick pieces, if you can, and that's understood. Because there will be trade-offs. Absolutely.
Does that mean, does that mean there's going to be a vote, does that mean there's gonna be a vote necessary? Or is this just a presentation?
Well, I think we would probably want to choose a favorite to take to the Historical Commission, one that seemed in keeping with the library building program and the services we're providing, and also, um, seemed to us to be the best, the best, um, solution to show off the preservation features that they want to be retained and to be highlighted.
Okay, well, then, then I think it should be a joint meeting if they're going to vote on one to present to the Historic Commission. Anyone, anyone have an opinion?
So then I'll post a joint meeting with the library working group, and, um, and then reach out as well to the Historical Commission to see if there's a future date that they would have a Zoom meeting with us. They're used to in-person meetings in the museum cottage, so, but I think to see the designs well, I think, uh, virtual meeting makes more sense.
Um, at one point, we asked that Fine Gold come to us and present physically to us, is that not something that's going to happen?
It is typically the way it's done.
Yep, I think they, if that's a, if you think that's a good time for, to have an in-person meeting, I think it, it's, we can absolutely do that. I think there's a lot of people who are hoping, where, if it's a joint committee meeting and a working group, that's a lot of folks, and that, but that's fine, and we can do that, shouldn't be a problem.
Well, the last time we met with them at, in the Marriott Wood Room, um, we couldn't understand them, they, we, we didn't know if they understood our real concerns. It, it was kind of a tough situation, I thought.
Well, that was a hybrid meeting, I think, I'm really recommending a Zoom meeting, the Historical Commission, so that everyone can see the designs. But we could come back.
It's part of, part of being a good architect is, uh, sensing the room. And, um, being in the room and seeing when people are uncomfortable or unhappy, and they couldn't tell that the Historic Commission was very unhappy. It, it felt like it didn't feel, um, I didn't find it comfortable, um, us trying to explain to them and, and then pointing at things, but we couldn't show them, we couldn't walk them to the room that we were talking about and experience it together.
Just, I think you can unshare the screen, by the way.
Yeah, if you're discussing historic fabric, you kind of need to be able to see it and touch it.
Okay, fair enough.
And I think Nancy has her hand up.
I was just gonna say the same thing, it, it really can't see, touch a plan, looking at it on a Zoom meeting, it really needs to be in person.
Do you then just project the, um, image of the plan onto a screen?
Typically with the Permanent Town Building Committee, we've always had it on a big flat table, and we had the meeting and everyone goes.
Well, okay.
I'm just doing, I'm doing a quick search of, of our meeting room schedule, just to see.
Yeah, see, that, I mean, that sounds to, seems to work for the building committee, but there's a lot more people that would be trying to sit around a table and look at something together, would it be better to do it with a, where we're all looking up at a screen?
Not for me, but.
You can be looking at a screen in the Marriott Wood Room, with that nice big screen, we can just all be in the room, I think you have to have them, you know, it'd have to be a big screen, so everybody can see it, because it's gonna be a big group.
We could, we can project it, and also have the design on the table for whoever wants to look at it after, too. The tables are big in there.
And most likely they'll have a PowerPoint anyway.
Yeah.
So let me double back, because they are the one group I, um, I don't know if, you know, I hadn't asked them about an in-person meeting, so I will post the meeting, it will be in person, the Marriott Wood apparently is available to us, maybe even the meeting room. And, um, we'll post that in person in the library, April 17th, 6:30 PM, and, um, and post it for the entire group, joint and, um, library working group.
Okay. Any other items?
So the last item, which could be bumped if town meeting doesn't end on the field on the 27th, is moving the May meeting forward a week to April 29th, so if people will just hold that date.
Ellen, if, um, we don't finish on the 27th, we're actually going on the 28th, that Sunday. So, because we have to be outside and on the field, we can't do it in the evening time, really, with bugs and darkness, um, so hopefully we can finish on Saturday, but if we can't, the moderator has let me know that we're going on Sunday.
Thank you, okay, so it won't be a conflict, so everyone will, will be holding, uh, an April 29th instead of a May 6th.
Excuse me. Anything else?
I think we're good.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Okay, here's our voting. Claremont.
Aye.
Dirks, aye. Fleckner not here. Roach.
Aye.
Secor not here. Teal. Cook.
Aye.
Hazelton not here. Karpinski.
Aye.
Mahana not here. Roberts.
Aye.
And Zagowitz not here. So that is one. Two. Eight zero zero, I think. I'm sorry. We've been losing people all over the place. So that's seven oh two.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.